Good evening. The October 26, 2022 council meeting of the Long Branch City Council will now come to order. Roll call, please.
Mr. Dangler?
Here.
Mr. Viera?
Here.
Dr. Vogt?
Here.
Dr. Sully?
Here.
Mrs. Wittes?
Here. Will everyone please stand for the pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have no proclamation. Oh, I'm sorry. The Long Branch Mayor, City Council Administration are committed to cultivating an environment of mutual trust and respect that values the diversity of our community. We will strive to enhance the quality of life for all who live here by making Long Branch a desirable place in which to live and prosper. We will treat all members of the public with respect and expect the same in return. Certification, please.
I hereby certify that this meeting has been published in the newspaper in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act and posted as required by law.
Thank you. I need a motion to approve the minutes of October 12, 2022.
So moved.
Second. Roll call.
Mr. Dangler?
Abstained.
Mr. Viera?
Yes.
Dr. Vogt?
Yes.
Dr. Sully?
Abstained.
And Mrs. Wittes?
Yes. Thank you. Tonight, we are introducing an ordinance regarding beach fees. I now would like to ask Stan Zuba, who heads our beach operation, to give us an explanation about our beach fees and the need to increase them for this coming season. Mr. Zuba will be available to take any questions during public participation.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for allowing me to come up here to speak tonight. Just like to start out by saying, we are, after researching, the lowest and most affordable beaches in the Monmouth County area. Okay? We have researched over the summer. We went out this fall to look with other municipalities in Monmouth County. Our daily badges and our seasonal badges are both the lowest in the area. With that being said, even with the proposed increase, we will still be the lowest in the area. And I think that's important for us and for our residents and for our visitors. Some of the reasons for the costs, everything going up is naturally with COVID, everything went up. But not only that, but during COVID, people found our beaches. A lot of the beaches were closed in other areas. So they found the west ends, they found the cottage places. So cost of cleaning has been skyrocketing between the tipping fees at the dumps to the amount of stress we put on our tractors and we put on, you know, just our people in the vehicles themselves. Another thing that has hurt a little bit is, I know it's a wonderful thing not to have plastic bags, but people carry their stuff on the beach now and without having something to put it in. They don't want to put it in their beach bags or anything like that. So what do they do? They throw it on the beach. So this was all an area that we had to spend more time this year, along with the, over the last seven years with the beaches being increased due to beach replenishment and now with the southern beaches that we added. So that's one of the things. The second thing is, we've had a little bit of climate change around here, as everybody knows. Now, instead of just guarding our beaches from Labor Day to Memorial, sorry, Memorial Day to Labor Day, we're guarding almost to October. Last year, we had five beaches open till 7:00 a. m. Normal closure is five. This year, we had seven beaches open till 7:00 a. m. Plus, after that, people were coming at 5:00, 6:00 a. m. because the weather was nice, they were setting up, they were having dinner, they were going for a swim. So in order to keep that, them, those people safe, they were staying till dark, we had to keep guards on, not on the stands. We closed the stands, but we kept guards on the beaches, riding in carts and checking up and down and making sure that there was no issues that way. So all that put together has really, you know, added an effect to this. I am proud of saying that we didn't want to touch anything to do with the youth, so the 13 and younger are free. 14 to 17-year-olds will be the same thing as they were last year. Our seniors will be the same, they will be free. Our disabled people will be free, and our veterans will also be free. So we did not touch that. And last thing that I have is, even though, you know, we're asking for this increase, the last increase was over a decade ago. So basically, it was around, I think, 2011, last time we raised beach badges. So all in all, I think we're doing good as far as that goes. And, you know, we have clean beaches, everybody enjoys what we're doing down there, we get a lot of compliments, and, you know, we want to continue, but we want to, you know, think it's a need for it. We will have our holiday badges. They will be $45. They will start November 1, and they will go to January 31st. So it is an opportunity for everyone, residents, everyone, people out of town, they want to come in, go to the recreation office, they can get them for $45. And with that, I'll be here to answer any questions and, you know, talk to anybody after the meeting if they wish.
Thank you.
Thanks, Stan. Thanks, Stan.
Thank you.
And you and your staff do an amazing job, and we'd like to thank you for that. We know it's difficult at times, and we appreciate all your dedication. Consideration of ordinance, public hearing, and final consideration. An ordinance amending section 116-2 of the Code of the City of Long Branch Beach Fees. This ordinance was introduced on October 12, 2022, and amends the fees for the use of the City of Long Branch beaches. I need a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved.
Second. All in favor? If any member of the public has any comments to make, please come to the podium, state your name and address clearly for the record. You will have five minutes and may only speak once.
Vincent Lepore, 33 Ocean Terrace, Long Branch. I request one-minute notification. Mr. Martin, on the beach increases for the beach badges, we're looking at the annual for adult. Am I correct in stating it's currently $45, and you're going to change it another $25 to a total of $70?
Yes, correct.
So the adult from 1861, the beach badge is going to go from $45 to $70, an increase of 25. Now, on the daily, the adult, 1861, it's currently $5, you're going to change it to $6. Is that correct, Mr. Martin?
For days during the week, that's correct.
All right. So what's currently $5 is going up $1 to $6. On weekends and holidays, currently $7, Mr. Martin, you're increasing that to $9, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. So we're going currently from $7, increasing adult, weekend, and holidays, another $2 to $9. Mr. Raynone, it would have been nice had when you written the ordinance with the amendment, you would have done it the traditional way, with the strike lines through on the beach fees with the new fees added, rather than leaving the public guessing as to what's going on for the amendments.
I actually did, I actually did write it that way, and when we had it in the packet for the meeting on first reading, it was that way, and I, I'm only assuming that the clerk's office accepted the changes in this version that's here, but that is in fact how I wrote it for the council. So I apologize if it's not in the one that you have, but that is how I wrote it.
I'm not, oh, no, we're not going to use the clerk as an out on this one, Mr. Raynone.
But you asked me whether I did it or not, I did it that way.
Online.
Was it me who, I'm not the one who prepares the packet. I prepared it that way. I always prepare them that way. And I'm sorry, Mr. Lepore, if you don't like that answer.
Do you proof the agenda, Mr. Raynone, for the meetings? Apparently, you didn't.
The answer is, is I don't, that's the clerk's job. I do my job, and I produce the ordinance and a redlined version of it. And I think everybody on the council will tell you that's the one that I circulated. So in all due respect, I'm sorry that you, you always come here and try to find something that I did wrong, but in this circumstance, I just didn't do it.
Oh, yes, you did. You didn't proof the agenda for tonight to make certain the ordinance was written correctly. That's what you're getting paid to do, Mr. Raynone.
It's actually written.
That's what you're getting paid to do.
It's actually written correctly, Mr. Lepore, you just don't like it, the form that it is. And by the way, you didn't have any.
Tell me where the change is for the increase in the annual and the daily on the adult in the ordinance right now, online, Mr. Raynone.
You just asked the question.
Where is it?
You just asked all the questions. You just asked all the questions.
It's not written in the ordinance, that's why I had to ask the questions.
It's not true.
Yes, it is true. You failed to do your job again.
Right.
And I resent you using the clerk as an out on this one.
I'll let the clerk speak for herself.
She doesn't have to. You're guilty, period. I heard Mr. Zuba's explanation for the beach increases. I understand the machinations, the mechanics behind maintaining a beach, but we're going into a recession. And with this recession, despite the fact we may have the lowest beach fees in the area, we had a lot of people that put up with a lot of stuff this past summer and the summer before, with the June 10 riots of 2021 and the May civil unrest this year. And we want to keep the people as open as possible to coming to the beaches, being that those two events certainly had an impact on beach attendance.
One-minute warning.
As such, for that reason, I'm against this ordinance. I request the beach fees remain the same, that there be no additional increases. We owe it to the public for the way we failed them in preventing the riots and the civil unrest, giving this city a bad image. No.
Is there anyone else? I need a motion to, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'm sorry. Is this, do I have to talk about the beach passage?
That's coming up.
Oh.
Public portion, yeah.
Yeah. I need a motion to close.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
This is the second reading of ordinance 24-22 entitled, "An Ordinance Amending Section 116-2 of the Code of the City of Long Branch Beach Fees." I need a motion to adopt on second and final reading and advertise according to law.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Dangler?
Yes.
Mr. Viera?
Yes.
Dr. Vogt?
Yes.
Dr. Sully?
Yes.
Mrs. Wittes?
Yes. There are no ordinances at this time for introduction. Public participation for resolutions and all general comments. I need a motion to open the public portion of the meeting for all comments. So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? If there's anyone in the audience that has a comment to make, please step to the podium and state your name and address clearly for the record. You'll have five minutes and may only speak once.
Good evening. My name is Jeffrey Eaton. I am the manager of Washington Manor, which is at 325 Ocean Boulevard.
Jeff, you can just raise that mic, too.
If you're not familiar with the property, we're also bordered by Ocean Avenue, as well as Pavilion and Morris. Unfortunately, today at about 5:00 p.m., there was a car traveling southbound on Ocean Boulevard. It went over the median, went over the northbound lanes, over the sidewalk, and through a four-foot-tall brick wall that we have on the Ocean Boulevard side of our property. This is the second time this calendar year that a car has gone through that brick wall. So I guess I'm concerned about the, the traffic safety on Ocean Boulevard. The neighborhood, there used to be a lot more vacant lots, and they're being replaced steadily by high-density residential, so there's a lot more pedestrians. Again, no one was hurt today, I don't think, and no one was hurt in the previous accident, but I think it would be wise for the city to look at the safety features on Ocean Boulevard, perhaps the miles per hour, perhaps planting trees, maybe other ideas that a traffic engineer would have for, for making it safer. But I, I'm worried, again, this is only two accidents, so it may be a coincidence, but I just wouldn't want to see it become a trend. Anyway, that's all I have.
Thank you.
Request one-minute notification. Vincent Lepore, 33 Ocean Terrace, Long Branch. Resolution 258. Can anybody in the council tell me the size of the lot we're discussing as far as block 268? Lots 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 32, and 33 for the record.
We're pulling that. We're pulling that.
Yeah. Well, but, Mr. Lepore, I have a question. I'm not sure, Mr. Lepore, I have exactly, I apologize, the map that I have in front of me, I can't seem to read the writing on it, but this item is going to be pulled from the agenda, so we'll get you your answer, though.
Resolution 258 is being pulled from the agenda?
Yes. I take that back, Mr. Lepore, I believe that it's 1.7 acres.
Now, why does Mr. Graviano have 3.55 acres on the study for the planning board? There's discrepancies throughout this entire process here. The council, you got to get your act straightened on this one. The, what's the reason for pulling this?
We're not ready to prove.
We had discussion in, in executive session, and we're not ready to act on it. I should say the council's not ready to act on it.
Oh, very good, then this will give you time to do the right thing. It's most suspect that the city is moving with this after the Lower Broadway-Kushner settlement for developer agreement, and with the recent acquisition of the hospital buildings to move this parcel of land across from the main library to be designated a redevelopment zone. It's nice how the city facilitates a potential developer in this matter since the property is under contract. The better use for that parcel across the street from the city library is that the city should have sold the hospital buildings and purchased the land and built the city hall annex on it to keep all municipal services centralized. I can't get into the figures because nobody definitively has the size of the lot.
1.88 acres. Sorry, I was able to read it.
If it's 1.88 acres, and Mr. Kushner purchased Lower Broadway for $21 million, and the hospital donation is 5.29 acres and assessed at $10,300,000, then in proportion, the lot across the street, by your size, Mr. Raynone, would go for $4,200,000. And there would be an incentive for the sale of the hospital buildings, along with the application of the $4 million in grants, to make that annex happen across the street. Mr. Raynone, by doing so, it would spare the Loudon Apartments from being in the vicinity of a court withholding cells and transportation of criminals, not the empty apartments you referred to at the last council meetings. By having the annex across from the library, that Bath Avenue area would maintain a residential character. As I stated before, the findings in the study area, particularly criteria E under LRHL, is faulty. The verse ownership did not prevent development unless the city, again, had a particular developer in mind to satisfy that developer's plan. But certainly, developers could have developed the front lots 1 through 5 with no problem. The redevelopment zone designation is an attempt to flip the approach to this land. Since municipal land use law, the frontage controls the property. Again, spot zoning, pure and simple. Like it or not, this city is still governed by the appellate division decision in Brown-Pandey versus Long Branch, where that particular lot was not qualified to be a redevelopment zone. The Raynone firm, Raynone Law Firm's use of these redevelopment zones for financial and scheduling agreements is completely abusive. The amount of taxpayer dollars being thrown at redevelopment legal billing is weightful. You may pull it tonight, but when it comes back on, I'm requesting a no vote on resolution 258. Again, I'll state it, the sequence of events, the way these developer agreements are coming about, are most suspect. Not that anything wouldn't be suspect with the way the City of Long Branch went about its redevelopment.
I just want to say, start off saying welcome to Mr. Browton.
I'm sorry, can you state your name and address for the record?
Lillian Grauman, 990 Van Court Avenue, Elbrahan, New Jersey. I want to welcome Mr. Browton. I, I haven't been to a council meeting, but I watch everyone, and very impressed with the last council meeting, how you handled it. Had a couple conversations with you. I think you're going to do a terrific job. Good luck. If there's anything that I could help you with, or always available now that I'm retired. Just want to thank the council for the, for the job that you're doing. I think you're doing a good job so far. My only concern is, what the gentleman had just spoken about was traffic enforcement. Long Branch, I don't know, I mean, it's just not Long Branch. We all know that it's, it's all over. There are, there are issues as far as, you know, I mean, since COVID, people seem to be less patient. People are in a, in a rush. Everyone seems to be a little bit more angry, we're not kind to each other. But the one thing, my main concern with the enforcement, I, I live on Van Court, and unfortunately, in the summer, it's, it's like a Speedway. Even in, even in the, in the winter, I mean, now in the, in the fall, you know, it was foggy yesterday, and you've got these kids on their scooters, bicycles, no lights. A kid almost got hit the other day, and this would be the fourth time that I've seen this from June until, until yesterday. And it's just the speed, they must be doing 60, 70 miles an hour. And every once in a while, you'll see an officer by the park, and the park is okay, but it's the whole road. Because what happens is that people don't like to drive Norrid Avenue when they'll cut through and take Van Court. So if there's anything, I know I had made some suggestions, and hopefully it'll be looked into, but, and it's, again, yesterday also, a bus stop, bus driver stopped, and here comes a college kid down Van Court, almost hit a kid because went right, didn't, didn't stop for the bus. Had the flashing red lights, I was behind the car, couldn't catch it, couldn't get a license plate, but it's like a daily thing. It happens, it also happens on, on Cedar Avenue. On a Friday night or a Saturday, traffic goes so fast, and you have people that are trying to cross the road by Lenox, Cedar and Hoyey, I'm sorry, to get to Lenox. Again, it's, it's all over town, so you have a big job ahead of you. The other thing, I also like to thank Stan Zuba, because I was talking to him prior to, we're talking about the Ocean Township pool, the pool in Long Branch, his staff did a great job. You know, I, last year, if you look at the difference between the staff at Ocean Township and the staff this year, it was like night and day. They did a great job. So overall, I have to say the city, you're doing a good job with everything, keep up the good work, and always here to support you. Thank you.
Thanks, Lillian.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? I need a motion to close the public participation portion of this meeting.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I will now ask Madam Clerk if there were any changes to the list of resolutions.
Yes, resolution 258-22 was pulled from the agenda, and resolution, resolution 259-22 was added to the agenda, a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute two discharge of mortgages for Eileen Herbert and Anthony Herbert for the premise known as 54 North 5th Avenue in the City of Long Branch, New Jersey.
Thank you. We can now take the listed resolutions as a consent agenda. I have a motion.
So moved.
Second. Roll call.
Mr. Dangler?
Yes.
Mr. Viera?
Yes.
Dr. Vogt?
Yes.
Dr. Sully?
Yes.
Mrs. Wittes?
Yes. At this time, miscellaneous business for the good of the order. Councilman Dangler?
Thank you, Madam President. Only thing I have for tonight is, I don't think we meet again before the midterm election. These are important times, no matter what side of the fence you're on, so please go out and vote, and tell your, your neighbors and those in your family who are eligible to vote to just please cast your vote in whichever way they choose. Thank you very much, and God bless you all.
Thank you. Councilman Viera?
Thank you, madam. I just want to thank Stan Zuba and his faculty and his, my mind just went blank. Everybody got working for you, great job you did at the beaches this year and the pool. Got a lot of compliments, and a great job keeping, staying, keeping the beaches open a little later. It's great. For the traffic concerns, our public safety director is here, and he's, he's jotting down some numbers, and he's going to be working on that. I know it gets dangerous on that Ocean Boulevard, although I go through it every day, and it's a tight spot when it gets to Pear Village there, so, and I know we're going to take, address that. Good night.
Thank you. Councilwoman Vogt?
Thank you, Council President. You may know that we each, well, the council members serve as liaisons to our different commissions, and I'm the liaison for the Environmental Commission, so two things about that. One is that there are openings on the commission, so if you can check the website, and if you're interested in serving on the Environmental Commission, please think about putting in your, your resume for, for that, because we'd like to have a full board. And second is, on November 10, there is going to be what's called an environmental justice community engagement session, which will be an opportunity for everybody, actually in, in city hall, to come and talk about any environmental issues in terms of pollution, in terms of parks, in terms of any environmental concerns that you would like to bring forward. That actually is being sponsored by the Department of Environmental Protection. So it's a broad, it's broader than just Long Branch, but it's an opportunity for everybody to kind of bring to their attention any concerns that you may have. I'll remind you again, we have one meeting, again, before that, but November 10. And again, if you're interested in serving on the commission, please put in your resume, and thank you so much for coming tonight.
Thank you. Councilwoman Sully?
Good evening, everybody. I have three things this evening. The first one is that the Long Branch Senior Center will be closing temporarily on Friday, October 28, and they will open again for business on November 14 at the Bucky James Center. I think most of you do know that the, there's going to be great improvements in the Long Branch Senior Center, and so that's where we put our lovely seniors temporarily. There will be no stop of programs. They will do everything they can to make sure that everybody gets their exercise and everybody has their parties. My next thing is, I can't stress enough, and Councilman Dangler said it, it's very important that everybody vote, November 8, on Tuesday. And then I would like to wish everybody a happy Halloween. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Palone?
Thank you, Council President. First of all, I'd like to thank everybody for being here this evening. I have a few events I just wanted to announce. So tomorrow night, the Arts and Cultural Center is having a Hispanic celebration night. Again, that's tomorrow night, October 27, from 6:30 till 8:00. There'll be a special performance by the Long Branch High School Dance Team. It's a free event with complimentary refreshments. Also, this Saturday, between 2:00 and 4:00, we're having, celebrating Halloween at Jackson Woods. There'll be trick-or-treating, a costume parade, refreshments, and activities for the kids. It should be really nice, that's all free. And then next Thursday, November 3, there's going to be a coffee with the mayor and council from 8:00 a.m. to 9:30, also at the Arts and Cultural Center. Join us there for just casual conversation and some coffee. That's next Thursday, November 3. And finally, some of the other council members had talked about the, the election on November 8. And finally, some of the other council members had talked about the election on November 8th, but we also have early voting at the Long Branch Senior Center. That's at 85 Second Avenue at the corner of Chelsea, or close to Chelsea, I should say. And that begins this Saturday, the 29th, and runs through the next Sunday, the 6th. That's Monday through Saturday's 10 to 8 and Sunday's 10 to 6. So anyone who can, wanted to vote early, you can start on this coming Saturday, straight through next Sunday. And then, as was mentioned, the election is on Tuesday, the 8th. So thank you again and thanks for being here. Have a great week.
Thank you, Mayor. And I would like to also thank everyone for being here this evening. Stan, thank you for your update. Appreciate it. And Director, thank you for all your efforts in helping us because we too are all concerned about the speeding bikes and, you know, you know, some of the traffic issues that we're having here in the city. So I would like to thank you for addressing those. And with that, I'd like to wish everyone to have a good week and stay healthy. And I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone.